Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Miami Township Board of Trustees Meeting of July 17, 2023. May we first, I'll first entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of July 5.
So moved.
I second.
Hearing your motion in second. Any further discussion? Any discussion?
No.
Shall we vote?
To move in second to draft the minutes of July 17, 2023. Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Moyer? Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, let's, I also entertain a motion to approve the payment of bills. At $42,777.41, that's general fund $2,496.90, fire fund modest $34,545.35, EMS billing $1,611.74, cemetery fund $674.66, and road and bridges $3,448.76.
I so move with the deletion of the word modest.
Okay.
Two seconds.
Hearing both the motion and the second, may we vote?
To move in second to approve payment of bills in amount of $42,777.41 as enumerated. Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Moyer?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
All right. Go through our correspondence. We had some information from our attorney Jen Huber regarding agritourism and appeal of Kelly Petron. Correspondence from the regional planning, Green County Regional Planning. There's a final hearing finally for Perspectives 2040 before the Green County Commission, July 25th. For those of you who don't know, Perspectives 2040 is the 20-year, what would you say, plan? Maybe the plan, land use plan. Ohio Township Association sent us their newsletter. OTA Training, that's the Ohio Township Training. I saw an interesting training that they were advertising and it's called, and it's Wednesday morning, I'd have to cancel lunch with a friend to do it, but it's called Making and Defending Zoning Decisions.
Yeah, I saw that.
Explore the fundamentals of making sound zoning decisions from the standpoint of statutory compliance and resolution framework. Examine the findings of fact, the delivery of decision, and the timing for an appeal and what a court will look for if it's going to be reviewing your township zoning decision. And that would be a good thing to attend, and I might just try to make that happen. Anyone else is interested.
Thank you for reminding me.
That would be great. Okay, Green County Planning, our membership dues are going up, we knew they would. 25 to 30 cents per capita, what's that, about 1,500 bucks?
Hmm.
Doesn't matter, 6,000 of us in the township approximately. Ohio Office of Budget and Management, it sent us their financial report for June 2023.
It's unincorporated per capita too.
Oh, it's unincorporated.
What are you saying?
It's unincorporated per capita, only.
Right. Because the village is a member and a dues-paying member on their own.
Oh, okay.
No double-dipping.
So that's only 500 bucks then, cool. Green County Auditor sent us, you know, interesting information of all the local governments that got revenue advance, including ourselves. Patrick Ostriff from Shred It, it sounds like you have, they're going to shred our old documents that we so carefully embedded, so.
They're going.
You said, who said your life isn't exciting? I saw all those emails about how you're going to meet him. Green County Sanitary Engineers sent us their newsletter called Pipelines, so you're here first if you're interested in the Pipeline newsletter. David Graham, instructions which we'll take care of today to close our Clifton Cemetery Fund and transfer that money to the Clifton Cemetery Board, so they can pay us to mow their grass. And that's what you call a resilient local economy. County Engineer Stephanie Gruff, oh wow, this is a big one for me, it's traumatic. She sent us information about traffic change on Street Route 72. It's all torn up, and if you had gone to the Green County Township Association dinner, you would have gone a harrowing route between Cedarville and Jamestown to get to Jamestown to the meeting.
Yes, you would.
And then on the way back, you couldn't take 72. And how do you get back from Jamestown if you don't take 72?
Well, you take 35, Bicket Road and then Bicket Road to.
Yeah. Well, my.
Rover Force.
It took me a couple of tries.
Glad you made it.
Thanks. And last but not least, Opers Retirement Training. If you know anybody who's retiring from Opers soon, I don't know there's training. Okay. All right, I'm going to, the last two weeks I said we were looking into some BZA, no, zoning concerns that a resident came to us on January 5th. He brought some grievances and some requests, and I thought since he wrote it out multiple times in writing and presented us in person, it's the least we could do to tell him where we're at with those things. So I'll be sending this to Mr. Weirig. Thank you, Mr. Weirig, but I'll read it aloud today. "Thank you, Mr. Weirig, for your grievances and suggestions. I'm sure they were offered in the spirit of improving the zoning process. Although our work in addressing these issues is not yet complete, this is what we have accomplished thus far and a look at the direction we're heading." He asked us about the April 2023 unapproved minutes that were distributed to the BZA. I don't know if this is all public thing. We interviewed our chair and our Chair of Zoning Commission, Richard Silliman, and Chair of the BZA, no, Brian Corey or Richard Silliman, and consulted with our counsel. Brian Corey reports that months ago during the joint meeting of the BZA, of the BZA Zoning Commission Township, we all had a joint meeting, the BZA requested guidance from the zoning commission on the temporary use. It was decided that the zoning commission minutes would be shared with the Board of Zoning Appeal so that they could be informed about the evolution of their thinking on changes to 18.52 temporary use of our zoning resolution. The rationale is that the BZA does not meet very often and doesn't stay current with the discussion. Well, this was not done. They did not share minutes regularly, but just before the meeting of May 3rd, Brian Corey, the Chair, asked Richard Zop if he could provide some guidance to the BZA, and Brian says that unfortunately Richard chose to send exclusively the 2023 April unapproved minutes, and Richard Silliman reports that they were distributed as part of the testimony. So our counsel mainly emphasized that zoning commission minutes should never be considered to be a directive for the BZA, just as input from the township trustees should not be considered to be a directive to the BZA. And that was her main take. She said it was not egregious that approved minutes were shared. That's not an egregious thing, they're public record. But this should not have been, it is unfortunate that they are shared in that way, that they... And I put an action here. "The trustees have instructed the zoning inspector to avoid distribution of minutes and communication between the boards altogether. Zoning commission minutes are available online. If the members of the Board of Zoning Appeals want to follow their work, it's available." Okay, and then Mr., where I guess this is about the recusal of Amy Aker, who recused herself from the BZA hearing of May 3rd regarding the Weirig Pavilion Shows, which are very close to her house. And there was a back and forth, when did she recuse herself? You know, Mr. Weirig asked Mr. Zop, did she recuse herself? There was only a two-day turnaround from the time the applicant first inquired the hearing, so there wasn't really a lot of time. But the primary problem of that whole thing is that we still don't have BZA bylaws, and therefore there is no procedure for recusal. Was that the procedure to tell Richard that she was recusing herself? We don't know because we don't know the procedure. Should it be presented to the zoning inspector or the Chair of the BZA? Should the recusal be in person? Some townships, some small governments, you come to the meeting and you recuse yourself right there, you stay and you listen and you participate, but non-verbally, and you don't vote. So, since we don't have procedures. The action to be taken, BZA must create bylaws on all layers on how we herd these cats into Second action to be taken is BZA training, and that was another request by Mr. Weirig is that we get, he suggests, requests that we have training for our BZA, and we all know that. And our attorney Jen says anytime they can do it, she's got two-hour training. I wish it was online where people could just plug in at their convenience, but we have to get them all together and presented, so that's the... And who schedules that? Maybe I'll talk to Richard Silliman to try to do that, or I'll do it myself, or something. Last but not least, private email used by the zoning inspector. Private emails used by other people, but in this case zoning inspector. Action? Denny looked me in the eyes. Me and Denny have a date on July 17th at 9:00 a.m. All township employees will have, on Wednesday, July 17th, 2023.
19. No, yeah, 19.
Oh, right. Dang those typos. All township employees, excluding fire and EMS, will have emails on the Miami Township server. All township business will be conducted on Township email and readily available for the public, by public information requests. And that is our dream and we're going to manifest. And also, another action taking, as we met with the zoning inspector and asked that he keep a file for each zoning case by address. All permits and permit determinations, along with all correspondence from both parties of that case, shall be filed in the township office and accessible to the trustees and the public. The last action, it is our fervent hope that the trustees plan to create a BZA administrator position that is separate from the zoning inspector position. The process for BZA hearing request and procedures, wait, I'm sorry. The process for BZA hearing request and the procedures for granting hearings are not sufficiently clear at this point. They're more casual, there are back and forth between the inspector and the applicant. When we have a clear job description and clear procedures, the position will be posted. And for the minute taker and for the news, I could, when I correct my typos, I could send you a copy.
Please.
Wasn't there one item missing from that?
Uh-oh.
If my memory serves, I thought his first request was to have Richard released from his job position.
Actually, there are two.
On the spot.
To have Richard, they asked that Richard, asked for Richard's resignation, and I guess we're taking a more procedural approach where we separate the BZA and leave him just with his inspector duties and more clear procedures was our solution to that, if we needed one.
Okay, but technically we did not terminate him as requested from Mr. Weirig.
Well, not.
Okay, all right, but it just doesn't say that.
Okay.
That's all. That was one of his four points, I remember the points.
No termination. And then secondly, he did ask us to, he asked that we video all zoning commission meetings. And we decided that since the zoning commission, they're not elected officials like us and have to sit in front of a camera, and they're not hearings like the BZA. And so, there are a group of volunteers, and I personally thought it would be intrusive to put a camera in front of them and do that. Did you guys have, was that your opinions that morning we met?
Yep. I was in agreement and also felt that since we don't have the technical capability of, you know, doing constant and multiple minute recordings and then asking the village to provide the service of transferring them on demand to thumb drives or some method of posting them, that there was a little bit too much.
Technical and intricateness. I'll get these to you and you and Mr. Weirig. Still on the public part of the agenda, we have some public here today. Are you?
What?
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Oh, yeah. Hi, I'm Kelly Petron.
Your turn.
Yes, and yeah, it's been really nice to speak to you via email and on the phone. This is my husband Brandon, and we have been working with the zoning inspector to get some things going on a 25-acre parcel that we own in Miami Township for agritourism. So I'm getting ready to go sit at his desk, so we figured we'd stop in.
And is there anything you want to bring to us at this time?
Um, well, I.
You don't have to, but.
Oh, no, it's fine. So we've been working, it's been about 12 weeks to get a scheduled meeting with the BZA, and I finally got an email back today that said, bring your paperwork in and we'll get you scheduled, so perfect timing.
So it's been, it's been a back and forth, and I think we've all received copies of most of it.
Yeah.
So, pleasure here to.
Yeah, it's good to see.
Fire Department Report. Oh, I'm so sorry.
You live at, you live on Kyle Road, right?
Yeah.
So the property in question is adjacent to our home site. So it's been a long road with Mr. Zop, just back and forth, probably over the course of a year, trying to get to where we're at now, and dealing with a lot of the same road blocks as was previously mentioned in this meeting. So we're happy to have a Board of Zoning Appeal date now and.
Well, we don't have it yet, but he said we'll get one.
Yeah, we're getting close. So we're excited about the next steps and present what our plan is for agritourism approval. So thanks for having us today.
And I'm remiss, I think of you as such a public figure that I, no.
Yes.
But you are also a member of the public, and did you?
Yes.
Do you come to speak?
I did come to speak. As regarding Richard Zop, just wanted to get a recap of, you know, May 3rd BZA meeting, and as a business, Dino Palata, resident, Dino's Cappuccinos also, but as a recap to see.
Go ahead.
We continually, we continually go through this dance. You guys are going through it now. We go through this dance of development or lack of development or holding back of development regarding BZA or whatnot. So out of these Chappelle Shows, came off the holiday weekend, great, it was nice, then we have Tuesday was the 4th of July, everybody's going back to work on Wednesday, then you have the Chappelle Shows, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday you have people here. So when I went to the BZA, we talked that day, we spoke about what it brings, the economic benefit that it brings. Well, I tell you, the economic benefit was ridiculous. It was unbelievable the amount of business that we garnered. I want to speak for myself, but we know what the town was like. We knew that if you've got 1,000 people coming into these shows, they're hanging around in the villages, they're hanging around in the area, and they're spending. So there is an economic push, there's an economic development from this, and I really want to get past, I hope we can grow and get past this, and we have to understand there is development coming. You've got Honda coming, the Honda LG Pack, these developments are coming. We need to start being less antiquated, just come up to speed, and that's what I'm professing to you guys, that you could bring it down to the BZA or to Mr. Zop, that we really have to start looking. I know, I know we have our, that the township has, set their patterns, what we look for for agriculture and development, but things are happening, things are moving, and there's opportunities that are coming. This is just a microcosm. These guys are doing, you know, they're doing what they're doing. You've got Airbnbs that aren't allowed, we aren't allowed to get livelihood going within the township if it's not agriculturally related. I'm just asking and speaking as, well, my position of what came out of this past weekend, and we go through this fight every year, but this dance works and there's money coming in, and I just want to profess that we're all, we're all getting, seeing a boom from it, and it's just something that, please, if you guys could see it trickle down to towns of the BZA or the zoning, it's important that we just start updating our ways, and that's what I wanted to bring to the table for you guys.
Yeah, we're not, well, we're not allowed to trickle down to them and tell them what to do. We are allowed to make text amendments, suggestions. What am I trying to say here? The temporary use that some people have been depending on is actually going to be coming up to a hearing, so they're going to have a document for us, and I've heard a few different things, you know? The big thing at the hearing was what is the definition of temporary, you know? Is it repeatable? I don't know what they're going to come up with, but it is a public process. There are public hearings. So far, we're just advertising, you know, in the corner of the paper down here or wherever they stick us. I never see them, and I read the paper, so.
I'll bring that note.
No, that's okay. I don't have good attention to detail and visual detail, but I just, what the temporary use says, the rewriting of the temporary use, which another thing that came up in the hearing was, it's a one paragraph to cover a whole lot of possibilities. And I think one of the decisions, one of the points that some of the testimony made was that it's not the BZA's job to try to figure out what they meant by it. Well, and actually, that's exactly what their job is, but there's not enough information, so.
I hear a broader message from what Dino's saying.
Yeah, definitely.
Not just this specific stuff, but that changes are happening, and township trustees, please listen and please review everything, because.
Thank you. May I have?
Development pressure that we need to adapt to.
I just want to report, it's relevant at the Green County Township Association meeting last week. They were very chicken little, the sky is falling, the sky is falling. At the same night, you were at the YSDC, Don, but they were like, they're coming, eastern half of the county, watch out, Honda's coming, Intel's coming, and there's going to have a spin-off business, and people are going to be looking for places to live, and they're going to be wanting to be in your really nice school district, your big old county schools, and what they said, get your zoning commissions ready, make sure that your zoning resolution is lined up with your comprehensive plan, and make sure all of that is lined up with this new 2040 Perspectives. And Sugar Creek Township said, we've successfully fought two battles with developers, and we can, we can call us, we can give you help. And then at the same night, Don was at the YSDC meeting, and the message was the opposite. How can we court these developers? And how can we stimulate economic growth? So I just want to say, are we prepared? Probably not. And we need, we need, we have two positions, alternate positions open on our zoning commission board, we have an alternate position open on our BZA board, we have public meetings, people don't even know that these are public meetings, so I think we have a lot of communication to do. And I'm Don, and Chris, you have the floor.
Thank you. Dean, I don't think, my knowledge, anybody disagrees with you or anyone who says that these performances do not bring a large economic impact, a large economic, a large positive economic impact into the village and township. I guess it's the procedural portion of this that sometimes gets into conflict with what's going on. Obviously, the procedural is with this one, go to the BZA and ask for a temporary use exemption, and I believe that was done four times, is it three or four? Doesn't matter. But in each instance, the BZA unanimously granted that temporary use permit. In general, in planning, the way we understand it, if you see a pattern of people going before BZA and asking for variances time and time again, and the BZA basically granting those variances time and time again, what procedurally should happen is then the zoning commission should start to look at why these requests keep coming in and what can be changed in order that it doesn't have to go to the BZA every single time, that there is some mechanism for that to happen. And there is a mechanism for that to happen, it's called rezoning. A property owner has the right to come to the zoning commission and ask for a specific rezoning from agriculture to industrial or business. All they have to do is write a check for $100, and the procedure goes into place. And they can make their case, and they can bring whatever information that they have before the zoning commission, and have the property, if the zoning commission agrees that this is the solution to it, they'll have the property rezoned, commercial, business, not commercial, we don't have a commercial. And then festivities like these, festivals, can happen as the zoning commission does it. It doesn't come to the board, you know this better than I do probably, that, you know, all we do is we sit here and we will rubber stamp primarily recommendations from the zoning commission to us to make particular changes. Now, we have the capability obviously to reject them or to modify them slightly, but in general, following the procedure, if it gets through all of those hoops and comes to us for a recommendation, we generally will agree with them and move that along. So in this case, you know, it can't really be the tail wagging the dog as much as our tails like to wag. We're not really in the position to petition or to, what's it called, lobby either the BZA or the zoning commission to make changes to do something.
I'd like to say that, you said they have an option, they have a way out, their option is to rezone from agriculture to what they want. The other option is that, you know, we can rewrite our code. Like what they're doing now is, you know, Weirig has suggested a festival permit. It's not just Weirig who now wants to do temporary use. We okayed a temporary use last week, and it wasn't a world-beating superstar, it was, it's going to be a book signing party and a wedding. So, that's not the only solution, isn't for him to request a rezone, and we can develop our temporary use section to spell out some of these things that people are asking for or whether they want to do it.
I agree 100%. I wasn't specifically talking about Steve Weirig and Dave Chappelle. I was referring more to the broader economic possibilities that we might look at at something like this. And when you go down that road, you then start with Dave Chappelle and Steve Weirig and 10 different shows. Then you have Richard Dillon, who owns 100 acres adjacent to that property, who looks at that and says, damn, this might be a good place for a Holiday Inn, you know, or two.
That's.
You've got all these people coming into town, I could make a fortune renting them rooms.
That's.
And then you, because you've got Youngs on one side, you've got Dave Chappelle on another side.
But having a festival.
Plus the Holiday Inn between you two.
But having a festival, having a festival permit is nothing at all like having a Holiday Inn.
What's the topic here?
It's the next general step into economic development.
The topic is.
Then put the Walmart next to the Holiday Inn. Then put the Walmart next to the Holiday Inn, because all those people in the Holiday Inn want to go and, and buy stuff. So then you've got festival, then you've got, then you've got the economic development.
I, I, I get the slippery slope model. I, I think that's a little over the top.
All right, I'm just trying to be.
Yeah, I under it, it's.
Direct about it.
Direct, yeah. I, I mean, the other thing I thought of is you said, we pretty much rubber stamped, and we did it. And Werrick pointed out, and I know that, Chris, that you have done this in your career because you shared it with me. We can initiate changes to the zoning code. He said, we pretty much, they do, and we say yes or no, and we rubber stamp it. That's, that's not true. There are three ways, the applicant, the trustees, and the zoning commission.
The zoning commission has just the same right to title that response from us as they would from Joe Blow. So you, you can't really say that, that us putting an initiative forward holds any more weight than anyone else, or has any more possibility of it being adopted.
They have to adopt it, you're true, that's true.
Okay, just want to make sure that, that this is not a done deal by us, you know, requesting a change.
True, that's, that's true, thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you for my two minutes.
No, no, this is probably the tip of the iceberg, you know? You know, ninety percent of an iceberg is underwater, so.
I, I just want to make sure that Dean doesn't leave here thinking, oh, they're anti-growth, or anti-economic development, or anti- any of these things that, that we've been discussing about. We're not anti-anything, we're just, we're pro-procedure. We just want to make sure that procedure is followed, and that in hopes is that it's in the best entrance, interest of the township as a whole.
I think that's what I was looking at, just the comprehensive land use plan, just looking at that. And again, updating it, it's just, there's some, there's some antiquated things that are in here that I think you just need to update and see, be forward-thinking instead of looking back and say, you know, having Richard say, no, 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 the minister of no just stops everything in its path, and we never get, we never get movement, or there's just a lot of, there's a lot of friction to get that movement. And I think we, hopefully, we can grow forward and move forward in that direction.
Is there a procedure set up when you're dealing with him, like, to get to the BZA or anything?
For us?
No, like for Richard, like when I send this stuff to him, is anybody else looking at it?
No, no.
Although it's public record, if someone wanted to, they could ask.
Sure.
So will this get uploaded into a portal, a permit application? Or does it all get administered just within an office?
It'll be, at this point, best case scenario, it'll be in an office with our new procedure that I just invented.
Him being a file drawer.
I sent a digital copy too, just in case it got lost or something.
Yeah. There's a lot of work to be done in the township.
How a new era. You guys are the tip of it.
There's a lot of work to do, Don, a whole lot of work to do.
Sounds like the chair has, the chair's itinerary to get worked on hard.
I don't know what else to do, people are coming to me asking.
From what people brought up.
People are asking basic things, can we get, can we get, can we have this basic thing done? And it's like, it's hard to say no.
From what we've just been through, is there anything to be added to tonight's agenda? Beyond what we've just talked about?
That's the best of my knowledge.
I'm just kind of nudging that we might move on.
Okay. Would anybody, anybody else have anything to add? Thanks for sharing, both of you. All three of you, okay. Fire department report.
I'll be brief. Twenty EMS calls, twenty fire, we did a total of thirteen inspections. We had an employee, employee assistance in service a few days ago that was for the supervisors and addressed depression, anxiety, and utilization of EAP in, in general. Our staff member that was out of FMLAs was back as of Saturday. And then just a dovetail I thought about with the Chappelle shows as that came up. We had two very minor, basic first aid kind of calls, which are very mild heat stroke. And did, did some fireworks, no issues there, done.
Good to see. The minor issues were at the Chappelle shows?
Yeah.
I must say, that's probably the briefest, most succinct.
That's why I said, I'm going to be quick.
That I can recall.
That brings back memories. I ended up in a medic type dehydrated, a grateful day show back in the day.
You didn't have to say where. I would have asked you later on.
And then at the end of the show, I feel really bad. They said, well, you got two choices, you could walk back to the parking lot, or you could be taken by ambulance tonight. I walked back to the parking lot, so. All right, I have a few things. Just a reminder, Colin, Colin Altman's retirement farewell is August eleventh at 5:00 PM. Public is invited, and.
Right here.
Right here, right here.
And our chief is retiring.
Yes, our chief. And we've always spoken about the new email update, right, Denny?
Yep.
We still on? Yeah, okay. I had a question about, didn't dig it all, but I don't have to. We were talking the other day about the new medic. And could you, just really quickly, remind me of, a medic is an ambulance, for those who don't know, a fancy ambulance, way beyond an ambulance, but the modern ambulance. What is the process we're on right now? First, you gave me four steps. First thing that happens is.
Oh, that was, that was on the fire truck. But it, it's, it's a little bit simpler for the ambulance, just because it's, it's just a simpler project.
So where, where, what is it?
We're actually on the org, at, at the stage of, we've already ordered.
So we've already done all the specifications and ordered?
Yes, yes. Because I didn't have to do any major spec issues with the medic, because it's not as, you don't get as specific or as detailed about what you want. It's a lot closer to being able to go buy a, a car, for example.
But I'm pretty good levels of medic, of.
There, it, yeah, what, what we were talking about was the fire truck, which was for me to get, to get, to make the initial call to a, to a factory representative or sales rep, get the specification process started so that we could get a rough idea of what is it going to cost, so we could start working that stuff into the budget. And then hopefully, then being to a point where we could actually do the purchase. So I think that's the four that you were talking about.
Yeah, because I've been, I was having a conversation with the township administrator, and he said that.
Wait, a town?
A township administrator.
Not our township.
Elbow, rubbing elbow session. And we were talking, he, they talked about how they had a medic, and he said, oh, and I just want to just bring this up for, for now in the future, said, oh, we would never spend that much money on the recommendation of one person with the spec, with the specs. Said we would always have some kind of committee and outside eyes looking at it. And this is a heck of a time to bring this up.
Who in the world would you have qualified to be on a committee to recommend specifications for a, for a medic?
Well, my.
So we, we have done several purchases that were done by committee, and it goes from a process of, say, an ambulance to a few weeks, two months. When we, when we spec Engine 81, that took nine months to get it through committee.
Well, you know what? Sometimes democracy takes longer. I'm, I'm just being honest. You know, we, there's nothing we can do about it now, but when you spend $300,000, even if it takes longer, you should have more eyes looking at it. And we, that's a process we did.
Who are the eyes? I'm just really curious.
People from other, people who've done this before, people who, other people who know about.
Margaret, every fire, or I'm sorry, not, not Margaret, sorry. Every piece of fire apparatus in this building is, I've done, every single one.
Yeah, and I'm talking about the big expenses. So you're saying there, you got your basic ambulance, there's no list of specifications? There's no, there's no, like, building up? We got our basic model, let's get this, 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 this.
No, I can't say that there's not. You, you come up with things such as, well, this is the type of Cyrene we want, this is the type of light bar, here's the brand of cot we want to use, that kind of stuff.
And there's no, like, more advanced technological things that we can choose to have? There's not a Cadillac version and a Subaru version?
Not, not, I mean, not particularly, unless you're talking about, like, a Type One, that's a van.
That was, that was my question, with, at least that's what this person might have been referring to, is the, the size of the vehicle.
And, and the other thing to keep in mind is that, that everybody is always given the opportunity to say, here are my things, here is what I've seen.
Who's everybody?
Everybody in the department. So that, that still gives them the opportunity to provide feedback on, maybe they went to a conference and they saw this, and this, hey, let's look at this. So that's, that otherwise, it, it is, I, I mean, we, so when Engine 81 was done by, or when Engine 81 was purchased, so we had the initial nine-month period of time, and we still spent an additional three months on specifications, which was not done in committee, because that's done with the manufacturer. Okay, so that was twelve months, and that was another nine months before the vehicle was done.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to ask around, because I'm, to, to say that it just takes too long to do with committee, and there's not much to be done.
So that, that was traditionally how things were done in a volunteer department in rural areas.
I just, let me just be completely transparent and honest. The guy said in 2021, they bought their new medic, and it was $260,000. Now, I know inflation is out of control, and I know supply chains are an issue, but you're expecting ours to be 330,000 or greater? And I'm thinking, is it all inflation? Or do we just like nicer things? Or?
No.
Okay, so there's nothing we can do about it now, but.
You, you also can't, you, you can't look at a, a vehicle manufacturer and say, because, you know, to use, to use the example you started with, okay, there's going to be a price difference between a Subaru and a Toyota, and things that are sort of along that line. We're not talking about a Cadillac or.
I, I wasn't talking, and I was a bad, when I said that, I knew that was a bad metaphor. I'm talking about, well, here's this super diagnostic thing that we did, that'd be cool. It'd be really cool if we had a super diagnostic thing, and wouldn't be great to have it. Hey, guys, I think we'd like one, what do you want one?
Well, I would be more than happy to go through an ambulance or fire truck with you and show you, this is what we have.
That would be great. And what is the name of the manufacturer we're getting from? What is it?
Braun.
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 B R.
A U N.
A U N. And this is not accusatory or anything, I'm just learning more about this, you know?
I would be very interested to know what the chassis was difference between the one that she's referring to and the one that we are.
Oh, you could build, you could build a van chassis, which is a horrible option, and probably drop eighty-five, just to guess, off of it. Those are not good options for us. Those are typically used for very minor inter-facility transfers where you're not doing a lot. I mean, you're talking about the back of an ambulance being half the size of what we have.
And so, yeah, I'd love to know more about it, and I, what was I trying to say? Yeah, I'd love to see, while we go through the fire, the engine, the engine that we haven't done the specs for, I, I'd love to know more, and I, and I will be pursuing the idea that there should be more eyes on it. I'm not, and I want to say that I'm not being accusatory, I'm just learning about that. When, when, when this person told me that they wouldn't, they would never spend that much money on the recommendation of one person, it really had, it really made, it really made sense.
Well, I, I would be.
You may have picked the perfect one.
I would be very happy to talk to you offline, not in a public meeting, about those specific things.
Yeah.
Because I, there are some things that I would like to say that are, I wouldn't want to say in a public meeting. So maybe we could do that Wednesday morning.
Maybe somebody should be with us.
I don't care.
Okay.
Make no difference to me.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I'm the chair.
You've got, you've got some other not, items on your list.
That was just, I'll talk to you in that meeting, I'm sure, Commander. Executive session. I'd like to adjourn to executive session, open, adjourn to a, move, I'd like to entertain a motion to move to executive session.
For purposes of?
For purposes of.
Cindy? We're on.
Consider the employment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, and motion of compensation of a public employee.
Yes.
Yeah, all those things. I, I still move.
I'll second. Second, shall we vote second?
Five forty-five.
Five forty-five.
I'll, yes, I'll vote yes. Don votes yes.
I, yes.
Oh, we did Smith, or is that someone there?
We will be back shortly.
Okay.
Hopefully shortly.
You want me to go get him? He, you guys saw his car take off.
You did?
Yeah, and I thought we should maybe run home real quick, gave the dogs a couple of bed, but.
Okay, well, we can do it in the morning, maybe.
Okay. So we need to, at six eleven, we are, entertain a motion to, no.
No, we were just, we're going to re-enter public session.
We're re-entering public session at six eleven.
And what actions, if any, did we take in the executive session?
The action we took was to approve a position description and employment agreement for interim chief for six months to offer to Denny. We will give him a week to look it over and sign it if he would like to accept the position. At the next meeting, we will give him an, an offer, a payment offer, or compensation, an offer for compensation. And that's, that's it.
That is it. I don't have anything else for fire.
Summit chair, Rose, report for Dan.
Okay, since the last meeting, we've had three burials, a full burial and two actions in the Blenford Cemetery. The columbarium doors have been removed and replaced, adjusted.
Good.
I'm sorry, the what?
Columbarium, they're all out of wax.
How many did you think you readjusted?
Oh, probably fifteen or twenty.
Is that right?
Some of them were, were like Subaru's.
Yeah.
Need a piece actually come off with the magnet, those tubes.
Is, is that an expense that they're going to cover? Or do we have to pay for it?
They never even, no, no, they think they were supposed to.
They promised to come down, but they didn't, didn't do it.
It's all done.
Okay.
So. I sold two natural burial graves today. I think maybe.
Which sections?
Prairie. And I think, I think maybe another one in the oak grove, but they, they're not committed yet, they won't think about it.
Yeah.
And then Brandon's going to work on the drives this week, get some of the grass. He done some the other day. Continue, rubbing away at it.
Do we ever have out-of-state purchases?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Had one come in from Indiana once with a party bus, a party bus. That's about all I have, anything for me? Something here for you?
Uh, I don't think so. No?
I'll get your water signs in this week, hope.
Okay.
Fiscal officer report, should we, are we ready for that?
Well, what? About roads.
Oh.
Can we talk about roads?
Sure.
Starting tomorrow, we're going to start the trimming, finish trimming the roads, knowing the digits.
All right, well, let's just review those roads. I took a quick trip around and thought, Smith, Houston, Hyde, Eastside, not East, Eastside. I took a quick trip around and thought Smith, Houston, Hyde, East Hyde, not East East Hyde, uh, should be on the mowing list.
Oh, they are. They've been trimmed. Well.
I know, I'm just saying mowing. East, East Hyde needs both mowing and trimming.
Right.
Larkins could use a little trimming. South River and Kyle could use both mowing and trimming. North River could use both mowing and trimming. Tanyard could use to be mowed and Brian Park could use some trimming. That's on my recommendation.
Everything will be both. On South River next to Doc Brown's, across from the what's it called? East Street, East Lodge, which is a little river or something. When you pull out his driveway looking east, there's like three trees. And I traveled back and you could see, but he, he requested that we maybe take a couple of trees down right there to, to for visibility pulling out of his driveway. This is going east out of Doc Brown's place. He says he has, he's almost been hit twice. Vehicle's coming heading toward seventy-two. He wanted to know if we could open that up a little bit. I looked at it. We could take a couple of trees down. Would, would give more visibility further.
If you think that's a traffic hazard, you make that decision.
I looked at it. I, I think it could be done. I just, you know, it's gonna be at the very end of our right of way.
I mean, we took god knows how many down for Carolyn Bailey and the woman on Harbison, um, but I, I don't want to get into the, the habit of being somebody's personal arborist.
About kind of back even with these fence, we opened up a lot of visibility. So, once I trim it with the boom mower, I'm gonna look at it. I, I think one tree for sure we could take down. It would be an arm to be right on either in or right at the end of our right of way.
Yeah. Well, I assume that's where they were at, sure.
Right. So, I, I said I would run that by you guys before I go out there and start cutting stuff down.
All right, well, you, you decide.
I think it needs some.
Right?
I'll tell him. We'll do something as soon as we can.
You agree?
You're gonna boom, you're gonna boom cut something somewhere.
No, he's gonna remove, he potentially going to remove a tree at the, at the full tree, not trim it. Take a tree down or.
And the location is, I'm sorry.
South River Road.
South River Road, sounds great.
By Dr. Brown's house.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Sorry, I was thinking about fire trucks and medics. My bad.
Hopefully we'll need either out.
Yeah, hopefully not.
Yeah, let's not do that.
So that's a, that's what the road department's doing.
Cool. Arm, arm feeling better or worse today?
Arm stiff. Again, okay, but it's just stiff and sore off. Probably after a fit because.
Still taking a leave or Motrin or some?
Leave.
Something?
Yeah, yeah. Just still not lifting heavy.
I think we should explain what happened. Why are you, you're asking him about an accident?
He was injured on the job.
Yeah.
Uh, replacing a wheelbarrow tire.
I was. That's exactly what it was.
It's a big job. It was not one of the tractor, it wasn't a tractor tire. It wasn't a, a mower tire.
A simple motion can cause you so much problems like this.
It wasn't a milk truck tire.
I would rather it did if I'd not have been.
It was a wheel truck tire. But, and the image was done.
Yeah.
You want to vote for Rhodes?
I think not for myself.
Okay, Don, no, Rhodes?
Nope.
We're gonna move this executive session.
Fiscal officer?
Oh, fiscal officer, okay. Fiscal officer is right on it. Um, we have a resolution for, we already referred to it in the, in the um, in the correspondence to um, take this fund we have, whereas Miami Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Three Thirty-One Distribution Revenue Fund Two Thousand, Revenue Fund Two Thousand Forty-One, whereas Miami Township Revenue Fund Two Thousand Forty-One no longer, is of no longer use to a township and whereas, under the direction of the Green County Auditor, the Board of Trustees wishes to transfer these funds to the Clifton Cemetery Board. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees hereby authorize the appropriation expenditure revenue fund Two Thousand Forty-One and direct the fiscal officer to transfer four thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-one cents to the Clifton Cemetery Board.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Not a lot.
Shall we vote?
Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Resolution Twenty Three Twenty, to adopt Twenty Three Twenty-One has enumerated transferring funds from the Clifton Cemetery Twenty Forty-One Fund.
It's Resolution Thirty-One.
Thirty-One, I'm sorry.
Okay.
From Twenty Forty-One Fund. There we go.
Right, right.
I'll need a copy of that, please.
Yes.
If possible. Thank you.
There we go.
Mr. Muncher?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Smaller?
Yes.
Resolution, Mr. Doctor. Thank you.
I, I may remind um, the trustees that the fiscal officer has to um, attend once a quarter. I'll remind her this quarter would be July, August, or September. If there's, if you have any.
I will be, I will not be here September. Since you're talking September?
Yeah.
Hold on, I find the date for you. I will not be here September eighteenth.
So I'll see, maybe that's the date, but we may want to um, gather our um, questions and be special, since, take advantage of the fact that she'll be here. Under zoning report, we have an executive session and we, I don't plan, we don't foresee any um, actually coming from that, so we'll move that to the end so y'all could not have to endure. Standing Committee reports, MBRPC did not meet this, this month. Green County Regional Planning, anything to say, Chris?
We, we did meet and as mentioned in the correspondence, in, in, in the executive session, we also reviewed the entire Twenty Forty Conference and Land Use Plan and all the sections of it and asked for any comments and, and everyone to a person, um, male or female person, um, were very impressed with the, with the work that was done by the uh, staff of regional planning in preparing that, that, uh, that Twenty Forty Plan. And it will now go before the full commission on Tuesday next, um, for adoption within, within the commission. And then we'll go for public comment, uh, before going to the commit, the commissioners, the Green County Commissioners, who make that final adaption.
Okay.
Unlike in townships where we do not adopt it, the trustees do not adopt a long range camp, conference plan.
And this is available online?
Yes, it is. That's the only one I have.
Okay. Don, Clifton Union Cemetery?
The Miami Township trustees have just a lot for us, giving us four thousand dollars.
This is breaking news.
We have not met since I last reported. We have a meeting scheduled August third. We have been given a house that will be sold and put in money, put into a reserve fund. So that is, somebody's, years ago, somebody put uh, put this house in their will, uh, gifted to Clifton Cemetery. I have a head scratcher because it's, I mean, we'll have this large reserve fund.
That in doubt, sir?
Yes, in doubt. It's, it's specified that we can only spend in, uh, income from investment.
Okay, that it?
Yes.
Now, is Y S Development Corporation too big of a topic? Do you have, do you have the abridged version? The synopsis or take as long as you want?
There are various little things. Um, and I, I maybe am I right that the Development Corporation directly got the grant for community solar study? Or was it through the community foundation? Anyway, it was initiated by the Development Corporation.
That was new business. I think that's all Development Corporation and I was, we, I contacted you guys one day. They asked us to participate in um, a letter of support and make a little video. Five of us had to, I did it, um, about why we need community solar. Um, community solar, I, I was gonna look up the definition of it, but as far as I understand it, rather than um, a large investment corporation coming in and having a large solar field and feeding it directly to the grid, it's, it's more a community level and it supplies, I actually don't know that, if anybody's got the definition of community solar, but it's more of a integrated, um, specific for, for supplying community with community solar. The grant was um.
You could go out and look at Glass Farm.
Yeah, that's community solar.
Right.
So, I think the first, I do believe we got a hundred thousand dollars in the first round.
Oh, yeah.
And.
Got a press release about it today.
And, oh, correct me, ma'am. And um, what we asked for was in the, in the first phase, money for, just for the expertise for what's possible and what can we do? And um, and then if we do a good job in the first phase, there's like all these sub-goals and um, we do a good job in the first phase, the second um, phase with we're eligible to be funded at two, additional two hundred thousand dollars. So, it caused me to think that where would you put a big solar, a big community solar thing? And I, I'm thinking it could possibly end up, it could possibly end up looking at the township. And then that kind of gets into where we're doing, we'd ask our zoning commission to you know, write the regulations for that. So, that, so there are people, there might be people interested in join, you know, having public input into, or as this develops, what are our needs, what are our needs for, is, what, for a community solar project? And how?
I'm sure there will be people who want to do that.
Yeah, okay.
Well, years ago, you know, nothing's ever new. It's always reinventing the wheel. But years ago, there were relatively extensive plans that were presented from the village manager at the time to uh, put a tremendous amount of solar on the um, Commerce Park before Cresco was there.
Okay.
Use a great portion, a large portion of that for solar, in addition to the Vernet property on Davis Street, to have it totally, totally dedicated to solar.
There is space within the village.
So, that, that came up once.
Well, phase, phase one begins with public input, so.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be big. Lot of attention.
Some questions, or should I just?
No, show, yeah, please.
Yeah, so when the press release came through, it was that Y S D C had gotten the grant. And I thought, well, they're not, as far as I know, they're not, they are not doing solar projects, so it must be for the township. That was just my assumption.
No.
But um, how did you, I guess, how did you get involved in the grant? Like, did, did you guys go through Y S?
We did a letter of support.
Why is this?
We were requested to, to produce a letter of support for the grant to Y S D C.
Gotcha.
It wasn't, it wasn't from us, it was to us.
And the grant was written with a village township um, orientation.
Everybody, so this won't be necessarily just strictly a township project? This would be?
Oh, no, it's not. We're, no, Lisa Abel's, this is Y S D C motivated
Gotcha.
Completely. I mean, not complete, I mean, we, we're just, we need us to participate.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Sorry.
No, no, please ask questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Old, I, we, I guess we didn't have any old business. And um.
Environmental Commission?
Oh, well, yeah, we'll stick up here.
Standing Report? Green County Township Association?
Oh, I'm sorry, because we went to the community solar grant. That was our new business. I skipped ahead.
Oh, I didn't see.
Environmental Commission. I went, I saw, I went there for the first time to to represent us. It was interesting. They talked mostly about the um, no, about the Ellis Pond and the Alton problem and a few other things, but nothing.
Wait, they're putting solar on Ellis Pond?
Don't start any rumors, Don. And um.
Something could have run this.
And I, I wanted to add to Green County Township Association, but I already reported, while Dino was talking, I already reported to Adam, the whole topic of potentials development coming. So um, if there's nothing else at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to move to executive session.
So moved.
For the purpose of.
Personnel.
Well, we're, we're gonna get it exactly though.
I'll, I'll have it memorized one of these days. To consider the appointment employment dismissal discipline promotion to motion or compensation of a public employee.
Yeah. And uh, we don't anticipate any other business after that, correct?
Correct. So that.
I moved. Did you second?
No, I moved too.
Uh, I, I seconded.
Move and second executive session at six thirty?
We, we fill that out and give it to Margaret, please.
Yes, yes. And yes, I think we're all ready to vote or?
Oh, can I ask one more question?
Oh, yes, many questions if you like.
The Clifton Cemetery Fund, the, was that the one that was the mistakenly filed and it had been money that came from? It wasn't the money that had come from the bequeathed, like, uh, bequeathing?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Um, there is no direct um, documentation
Gotcha.
of where that money.
But that's sort of the theory that it came leftover from?
That was one possibility.
Gotcha, okay.
But it has to, you know, you just have, when you've had something sitting there for thirty years, you just have to, you know, draw the line and say, this is now what we're gonna do it.
Sure.
You know, it, it needs to work for the township. And there's no real, there's no real way that it can, you know, benefit the Clifton Fire Station EMS Department that doesn't exist.
Right.
And that's a whole other story. And it, it kind of morphed over the years into the Clifton Cemetery.
Right. And that board, the Clifton Cemetery Board, that's a, or whoever you're, it's going to now, that's a?
I, I represent our township and there's a representative of Clifton and there, although that representative is chosen by the board.
Sure.
And there is representative of a Green Township in Clark County.
Want to explain to her what a union cemetery is, so?
Oh, all the different townships? Or well, you, you tell me, I'll guess.
Because.
Very unique creature. There are very few. I think just like two of them in State Road.
The, the Village of Clifton is partly in Union Township and
Green.
partly, excuse me, Green Township and partly in Miami Township. The cemetery itself is all in Miami Township, but it serves this bi-county, bi-t township, or dual county, dual township village. So you have this hybrid model.
And it started out as a church cemetery.
Oh.
The church was in the village. The cemetery was in the township.
Oh, okay.
And so that, when the church dissolved, or dissolved, dissolved their, their association or their, their, operation of the cemetery. You keep, you keep going.
I already said my part. It's, it's two different.
Then you have to, this was the only way to make a hybrid control of the two, or it was one of the only ways. I, I mean, you could have done different ways, but this is the way that they, that they chose. That the cemetery is, is a body, is an independent organization on its own. It is not owned, the cemetery is not owned by Miami Township. Cemetery is not owned by Green Township. It just happens to reside in both of them, but it is owned by the Clifton Cemetery Board. They, they, they have all the financial responsibility for it. They have all the operational responsibility for it. They have all the maintenance responsibility for it. And so the board, and as Don said, is made up of representative of both Green Township and Miami Township and Village of Clifton as a, as a third member. And they meet quarterly and decide all the important things that are, need to be decided about the operation of the cemetery.
And we hire.
Of Miami Township or the Board Trustees of Green Township, other than we, we offered to.
we, we offered to, as a township, we offered to, to provide the maintenance for it and be paid for it and we bill them every year.
Okay.
Except for last year.
Well, they, they.
Yeah, I mean, they had a bill yet. According to Margaret, they were never billed. They were, she never received an invoice from, a bill from you.
Yes, okay.
And, okay, that's, I'm glad we made it in that though. But we provide the maintenance and, and we split the cost with Green County of the maintenance, but that doesn't mean that we have any responsibility.
Township.
Green Township.
And you hired, you said something?
We hired Miami Township to do the maintenance.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. I appreciate all that.
It's a cozy arrangement, I must say.
All right, I appreciate that.
You're, you're, you're the.
I'm also just nosy.
Well, if you wanna be nosy, it's worth visiting.
Okay.
Go drive through.
It's a beautiful cemetery.
Walk around.
All right.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, a beautiful road in Clifton. Do you know where it is?
No, I'm, I'm sure I can find it.
Yeah, it's a beautiful cemetery and a beautiful road.
Well, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your interest.
Since you stayed to talk about it, I'll, I'll make sure I write it up.
We appreciate it. All right, we voted or we're going to vote? We did vote.
I, it was, and there seemed to be an acclamation that was happening.
Ananous.